Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
I call the special, our city council meeting to order. It is now 6:04 PM. Pledge of allegiance that will be led by the cadets from the 205th Battalion. See where we did that? Okay, so I wasn't in there, I'm sorry. Next is Angel Mendoza will be singing the Star Spangled Banner.
Tell us. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we've held at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight; all the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, yet he proved to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Angel, that was, you did a great job, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special celebration meeting of the San Fernando City Council. Tonight marks the second celebration meeting where the city council will be presenting certificates of recognition to each council, city, to each council member honoring individuals and organizations who make a difference in our community. Each presentation is meaningful and we're excited to share this with you. To keep the evening running smoothly and respectfully, I'm asking that each council member to limit their remarks to two minutes per presentation. A timer will be used to help us stay on schedule and to be mindful of everyone's time. Thank you for joining us on this memorable occasion following the conclusion and following the conclusion of the presentation meeting. We invite you to join us for some light refreshments to continue celebrating together. Now I'll turn this over to the city clerk, Ms. Fritz, who will go over the process for tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight marks the second celebration meeting where the city council will be presenting certificates of recognition by each council member honoring individuals and organizations who have made a difference in our community. Each presentation is meaningful and we're excited to share this with you. Recognizations will be presented in groups as agendized by the requesting council member in the following order. Mayor Mendoza, Vice Mayor Salorio, Councilmember Fajardo, Councilmember Garcia, and Councilmember Lopez. Recipients will be invited to come forward to the lectern at that time. The requesting council member will have up to two minutes to provide a brief summary of the recipient's achievements and express their recognition. The recipient will have one minute to have a representative speak from each organization. At the conclusion of their comments, recipients will walk towards the city manager, Ms. Kanika Kidd, who will give them their certificate of recognition and then you will stand alongside of the TV aisle until the group of presentations for the council member has been completed. Once a council member's group of presentations has concluded, the city council will have a photo opportunity with the group of recipients. The recipients will then leave the dais area, this is the dais area, and return to your seats. The process will continue for each council member's group of requested certificate recipients. And this concludes the explanation of the presentation process. If there are no questions, I would like to begin with the first group of presentations requested by Mayor Mendoza.
Thank you. My first presentation is the US flag color guard, the California Cadet Corps 205th Battalion from the Pacoima Middle School. Are they, is there anyone present here, I'm sure they're, or are they back here on the side?
That would be Randy Santa Cruz.
Randy? Yeah?
Samantha Muccino, Antonio Reyes, Stephen Catalan, Jack Calvahan.
The California Cadet Corps 205th Battalion from Pacoima Middle School is part of the 8th Brigade of the California Cadet Corps. And they build leaders and leaders show up and they show up and they, leaders show up and they show up. Cadet 1st Lieutenant Javier Perez is their leader. On behalf of the city of San Fernando, I'd like to thank you for performing the color guard at El Grito event. You did a wonderful job and gave our celebration a very special and proud moment honoring our country. So the presentations that I'm giving today are for those who performed at El Grito since it was kind of the beginning of an annual event that we've, the council has decided to have every year from now on. We had one about two years ago, but it wasn't placed on the agenda to have it yearly. So as being the first event of a yearly one, that's what I'm doing today, recognizing those that made that event special. The next present, next presentation is the Mexican flag, Los Charros. Señor Jimmy Escobedo y Francisco Para, ¿están aquí? This presentation I want to make for the charros who made this event so special with your dancing horses. Everyone fell in love with them, your skill and grace in working. Your skill and grace in working with your horses was simply beautiful. Your presentation of the Mexican flag touched many, many hearts, especially those watching from home. This moment held deep significance, especially given the current political climate and you brought joy to so many people. Thank you for your wonderful performance, we hope that you continue coming back, that you come back next year, thank you. Our next, the next presentation is to El Grito reenactment and this is to Rodolfo Padilla Torres, El Consulado General de México en Los Ángeles. I want to, I want to thank you for coming out and performing El Grito for us. It was an honor and such a memorable occasion for our community, especially during this difficult time for our community and our country. Gracias por su presencia. Thank you. Our master of ceremonies for El Grito, El Grito Coordinator and singer of the Mexican National Anthem, Francisco Javier Verdín. He's the co-director of Aleflo Clórico Olín and president and of KROJ 101.5 FM radio. Thank you, thank you, thank you Javier. You did so much for us on that day, for that day and making that even happen. Javier is the man who basically made El Grito happen. He organized the entertainment, arranged the program and even helped bring the color guard and the charros. And I asked him, Javier, can you get us some horses? And you know, two days later, we had horses, you know, he called me and I said, for free. And he said, yeah, you know, yeah, to get them for free. But because we, you know, we knew that he had put everything, he put everything together. He was also instrumental in coordinating the Consulado General de México and in helping the city receive the replica Mexican Liberty Bill, Javier, along with Rubén Rodríguez. Javier did an amazing job and thank you for making El Grito so special for our San Fernando residents. Thank you, Javier. And we have also the singer of the Mexican National Anthem. This is Rubén Rodríguez, Executive Director of Pueblo Salud. Is Rubén here? You're back there, Rubén? No? Maybe he's running a little late. Okay, move for later. Mariachi Tesoro de la Ciudad de San Fernando. Is there anyone here from? Mariachi Tesoro? Angel, okay, Angel, come on, no. Angel sang the National Anthem, the day of El Grito and he did a fabulous job. And so I asked Francisco if we could have him perform it tonight for us once again. So it was very, he made that evening so special for everyone. It was just very heart wrenching moment, I think, for all of us. The city of San Fernando launched the Mariachi Master Apprentice Program in 2001, inspired the Mariachi legend by Naticano. This program connects master musicians with youth to teach Mariachi techniques, theory and tradition, ensuring our culture continues. Mariachi Tesoro de San Fernando is always here to support our community events. Your performance at El Grito was fabulous and loved by everyone. Thank you for sharing your wonderful talents and the best of San Fernando with us, thank you. Tapatía Internacional Records, this is for José, señor José Pepe Benítez y Carmen Cordero, are they here? I don't know. Pepe, he's better known as Pepe Benítez. This, Mr. Benítez and Carmen Cordero of Tapatía International Records are promoters and they help spread the word about the event on social media. On behalf of the city of San Fernando, thank you to both of you for your valuable support. Mr. Benítez, gracias. Grupo Herencia Norteña. What would an event, event like El Grito be without music, música norteña? The rhythm, the energy and the sound that connects generations. Thank you Grupo Norte, Grupo Herencia Norteña for your outstanding performance and for keeping this proud musical tradition alive in San Fernando. Thank you, thank you for coming out. Aleflo Clórico Las Palmas Park. Who do we have? You'll take it, okay. Javier is the instru, Javier Verdín is the instructor. Thank you to Javier and all the children who do a wonderful job keeping our tradition, our traditional dance alive. Programs like this are vital to our community and must be continued to be supported. It fills me with pride to know that our program is taught right here in our city. You've been doing it how many years, Javier?
Forty-two years.
Forty-two years, yeah, teaching our kids. The next one, you might want to stay here, is Ballet Floclórico Olín, the Virginia Didiker and Francisco Verdín. Our professional dancers, many of whom began in the Las Palmas program, continue to represent San Fernando with excellence and grace. Thank you for sharing your talents and teaching our youth the gift of dance, carrying our cultural traditions forward for the world to see. Thank you. Fifty-four, yeah. And Virginia continues. Virginia continues to be a part of that program as well. So, yeah, thank you all for your participating performers. Each of you added something truly special to our El Grito celebration. Your dedication and spirit reflect the heart of San Fernando. We appreciate your time, your talent and your love for our community. Thank you all for helping make this event so a beautiful and successful event. Thank you all. Oh, there, one more, one more. Rubén Rodríguez, he's in the building, come on, come on forward, Mr. Rodríguez. Oh, which one? Salvador Chava Hernández. O las voces atanas, yeah. Voces, yeah, the voices. That's right, we didn't, we didn't come out, okay. Rubén Rodríguez. Hold on, Rubén, yeah. Rubén Rodríguez is an Executive Director of Pueblo Salud and activist. Rubén, I didn't realize that you were into singing. Do you have other, do you have other hidden talents that we don't know about? As Executive Director of Pueblo Salud, Rubén focuses on preventing alcohol, drug and tobacco abuse while strengthening education and community bonds. Rubén sang the Mexican National Anthem like there was no tomorrow. Thank you for making El Grito so special for our community. He also connected us with the Mexican consulate for the reenactment of El Grito and helped bring the replica Mexican bell to the city. Between Javier and Rubén, they really put in a lot of effort. There's a couple of years there that they worked on it till they finally were able to get it here. And where the other goal of the replica Liberty Bell is to find a home here in, within the city, most likely by City Hall or in City Hall or nearby. So that's one of our goals before the end of this fiscal year. So we're proud to have something like that in our city. So, thank you, y'all. And then, yeah, and then I have los, los de Grupo de Antano. Is there anyone here? Voces de Antano. And so, let me see, is, do we have anyone here? There they are. And what would a, what would a party be without any, without a band to dance? Ranchera, boletos and cumbias, right? So we had, we had the pleasure of having Voces de Antano at our celebration, bringing some joy and some music that we could dance to. So thank you for your presence and bringing some liveliness to our, to our event. So then I go, I guess I go to my picture. Then I go to take a picture, my picture, yes.
Madam Mayor.
So if someone from each of the groups wants to say like two minutes, so we'll start from the, yeah, if you want to say a few words from the color guard. Is there anyone from the color guard that would like to say a few words? Then the color guard, you can start lining up.
Honorable counsel, my name is Francisco Javier Verdín. I would like to say thank you on behalf of all of these great artists and people from the community, people that participated on all of the events. And it is the community that makes the events greater by donating their time and coming over just by saying that it's for the community, for the people, and they say, yes, I'll be there. And that's what happens on the, that would happen on El Grito. I would like to thank all of our fellow artists and all of the people that are here today to congratulate all of the talent that we have in San Fernando. In the past, it was said to be the nest of the arts and we want to keep it that way. We want to keep it rolling and know there's a lot of talent all over everywhere we see. Muchas gracias al concilio y muchas gracias a todos los artistas, al señor Rodolfo del Consulado Mexicano por atender nuestra llamada y pues esperamos que no sea la última. Muchas gracias a nombre de todos los artistas.
So, good evening, everyone, I'm Lieutenant Javier Perez and these are our cadets from Pacoima Middle School. And five cadets performed that night, the color guard. And I thought they had a standing job. This is our commander, 2nd Lieutenant Randy Santa Cruz. And tonight, out of the five who were there that night, only two could make it. Whatever considerations, and I just want to show you that three others showed up to take their place. And that's what we do, we teach them leaders show up and these kids show up over and over and over again because they believe in the program and we teach them to believe in themselves. And it's important to give to the community, the community they live in, the community they're growing up in. And you know, someday, be parents in. So I'm very proud of them and I want to say thank you. Thank you to the city of San Fernando as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. The next presentation we have was agendized by Councilmember Joel Fajardo. And the first presentation he has is a certificate of recognition to Planning and Preservation Commissioner Cecilia Martinez for her service to the city of San Fernando and to the community. Will you please come up?
Thank you all, I had the pleasure of having Ms. Martinez, as I know her, as being both my 6th grade and 8th grade teacher at St. Didicus. Yeah, and coincidentally, she is a resident here of San Fernando. She has served as a commissioner under two different council members, two very different eras. And she was an extraordinary teacher at St. Didicus. She was one of my favorite teachers, she was so creative. She emphasized the arts, she emphasized literature, she emphasized math. She really emphasized a well-rounded education. And I'm so happy about the lessons that she taught us about respecting one another, the books that she brought to our class, a couple that still stand out to me today. To Kill a Mockingbird, which in some school districts now is actually banned because of the truth that it talks about. the truth that it talks about with regards to race, and Number the Stars, which talks about the Holocaust. And she was able to have very deep conversations with us, even as eighth graders, taking us to the Holocaust Museum in Los Angeles and showing us the importance of being respectful to all people. She also has seen me win and lose elections, and I don't mean in San Fernando. I had the, the pleasure of winning treasurer in seventh grade, student government, but lost by two votes for president in eighth grade. And she was there all the time, seeing me work hard and helping me form who I am today. She has had 32 years in service in this community as a teacher, both as teaching students directly and also an instructional coach, not just at St. Didicus, but Dyer Street, Morningside, and Osceola. And so I would like to thank Ms. Martinez for her many, many years of service, not just to the city, but to the entire community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you, is this on? Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you, and I have enjoyed the teaching. Maybe I taught some of your children or grandchildren, who knows? But it's been a pleasure. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. The next presentation we have is a certificate of recognition to Somos Familia Val President Kevin Perez for contributions to the community.
Thank you so much. So I would like to speak a bit about Kevin Perez. I had the pleasure of meeting him approximately a decade ago, when it was, when he was part of a very, very small group in the valley called Somos Familia Valle, which was just a community group that met at different people's homes to talk about equality, safety, and the importance of LGBTQ issues. He was part of spearheading one of the first prides, if not the first pride ever, in the San Fernando Valley, which may seem like a small feat to some people, but it's a huge undertaking, especially with the concern that people wouldn't quote unquote be ready for it. Since then, he has worked continually with students. I know that you were part of LAUSD, working with many students in our community. But now he's actually had the opportunity to be a director full-time for Somos Familia Valle, which is located in Sun Valley, but really services the entire Los Angeles area and beyond. They have talking groups for all people, everything from talking groups to yoga, and many more activities in between, not just geared towards the LGBTQ community, but anyone who wants a friend, anyone who wants someone to talk to, and anyone who wants to talk about social justice. And so I am so proud of the work that he's done, especially in these difficult times when there are many emerging stigmas and misinformation with regards to the LGBTQ community. So Kevin, I would like to thank you and your group for your heroism and your advocacy for the community, and I wish you many more years of continued success.
Hello, hello, everybody. How's everybody doing tonight? Thank you so much, Joel and the council for the recognition. Somos has been working the last 11 years, really as a grassroots organization, with the conversations of the lack of LGBT resources here for our families and youth. And I've been working really, really hard, where it's now become my full-time job, growing San Fernando Valley Pride, which was just such a small event, and now it's, now it's very big, about 3,000 people attend in Banise. We've done Pride here in San Fernando, and just being, being able to grow with the city of San Fernando also in the last 10 years. We've done events here in San Fernando. We've worked with the high schools here, with the youth, with the GSAs, and really just build a community acceptance and fostering care for our community members that have many intersections, intersections with homelessness, with sexual health, with providing services, and just meeting people where they're at. So, yeah, that's a lot what we're doing, and we're very happy to be here and be recognized, and also acknowledging that, yes, we're one of the first doing this work, but we're going to still be pushing to provide what we need for our community. And just this past year, we opened the first LGBT center in the San Fernando Valley, and we're excited to just expand it and grow throughout the whole valley. So thank you.
All right. The next presentation we have is a certificate of recognition to Magali Koleli for contributions to the community. Oh, here you are.
And unfortunately, Magali couldn't make it today, but she did send her daughter in her place, the wonderful Clarissa. Magali is probably one of the most recognized named, names in all of San Fernando. She is a role model for countless people for various reasons. She's a very successful business owner, and in an industry that is very dominated by men, she actually broke out and was one of the most successful business owners in the city of San Fernando and in the region. People from all over the area have come for her food, and she has always been so involved in our community, especially supporting our police department when they needed it most. But above and beyond that, she was here to help everyone during COVID. Her restaurant became a quasi-market, find, where you could find very hard, or where you could find products that were very difficult to locate, such as rice and beans and even home cleaning supplies. And she did this all out of the kindness of her heart, very often charging only what it cost her to acquire them and not necessarily making a profit, but being there to serve the community. I actually wanted her to receive an award in 2020, but since she was a candidate for city council and for some other reasons, staff at the time didn't think it was the right timing. I do believe in my heart that she should have been the first recipient of this, for all of her commitment, especially during COVID, and being open when everyone was worried how deadly the virus was or could be. And so this is long past due, but I would like to thank you and your incredible mother for their contributions to the community, and if we can all give one more round of applause for Magali Koleli.
I wrote something on the phone. I wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing her hard work and dedication. It truly means a lot to her and to all of us who know how much she's poured into this community. This recognition isn't just hers, it belongs to every person who makes this community feel like home. Thank you for shaping us, for supporting us, and for reminding us that recognition means nothing if it's not shared with the people who helped you get there. Thank you to our community and to God from the bottom of our hearts for this recognition.
Yeah, photos down.
This is the time for photos. All right. The next presentations are agendized by Councilmember Garcia. A presentation of a certificate of recognition to Veronica Servacio for contributions to the community.
So my first nominee is Veronica Servacio. Veronica is a lifelong San Fernando resident and a small business owner operating out of our city. She frequently collaborates with other businesses in our city, just with other business owners, excuse me, to support our community, such as by hosting an annual toy drive at Morningside Elementary School to provide Christmas wrapped toys for children in need. Last year, she expanded the toy drive to include Sharp Elementary, the YWCA, and San Fernando Gardens. This year, she is holding a Thanksgiving gift card drive, collecting gift cards from supermarkets to Amazon to benefit those families in need who participate in the UCLA Early Head Start Program. I also saw that she recently sponsored a free ice bath at her gym in downtown San Fernando. Thank you, Veronica, for being so involved in our community and for giving back to those in need.
Thanks, Victoria. So, yeah, that's just a little bit of a nutshell. I'm a realtor by trade, but we also own multiple businesses that run out of San Fernando throughout the whole valley. And so I want, thank you for bringing up the Thanksgiving gift card drive. That's actually benefiting UCLA Early Head Start Program based in Orlita this year. And then we will be kicking off our Christmas toy drive again in about three weeks. We're kicking that off, and that one, I partner up with Titan Fitness in the San Fernando Mall. So it's Titan Fitness, Jims Western Ware, The Barber, and other small businesses within San Fernando. San Fernando has been home for our family now for four or five generations, so we run deep in town, so this is actually a very, it's a good honor, and I'm glad that I get to get it from Victoria. You know, put everything aside, it really is just about the community and just making sure that everyone, each one teach one, and that we all care for another, no matter what lines, boundaries are in the sand. We all just have to remember we're all human and we're all in the same community. So, thank you.
The next presentation is a certificate of recognition to founder of the Brewline Men's Fellowship in San Fernando, George Hernandez, for contributions to the community. George Hernandez.
It is my great honor to recognize George Hernandez, who founded the Brewline's Men's Fellowship here in San Fernando. George founded the Brewline in 2008 and has touched hundreds of men in our community. When I called George to ask him if I could present him with this award, he got quiet, and then he told me that it was 38 years to that day that he decided to change his life. He told me that 38 years ago exactly, he was sitting in a jail cell tired of being tired. He is an inspiration because he is a living example of what happens when you give your life to God and put your future in His hands. It will be a greatness beyond what you could ever imagine. The Brewline is known for its men's fellowship in the city, but they also serve our community in the city and beyond. The Brewline has done extensive homeless ministry, providing food and clothes to those in need. They give out boxes of hope with an entire Thanksgiving meal to those in need and have passed out turkeys, hundreds and hundreds of turkeys, and served hot Thanksgiving meals. They minister here and on Skid Row. George is more beloved than even Dodgers baseball because everyone here was willing to miss part of the World Series to be here to show him their love, and that is because he points us all toward the Father who loves us even more. And so I'm going to give my remaining time to him.
To God be the glory, others before self. I want to thank the San Fernando City Council, Victoria, for persuading me to come up here and receive this. I'm acknowledging the Brewline's Men's Fellowship. God only knows all things. I'm not the greatest speaker in the world, but I'm going to share. Cut me off when you need to. We started, like you said, in 2008, after a men's encounter on a mountain. I'd been a comfortable Christian for 20 years, didn't know Jesus as I know Him today, only Jesus. Seventeen years, eight months, and eight days later, we met for the 922nd consecutive Saturday meeting. 7:00 AM every Saturday morning. You want directions? We'll give it to you. Trinity Church, thank God, Pastor David. Everybody in the room, we have a, a meeting room, there's always 80-plus guys, all walks alike, from cops, doctors, to lifers. We're open to all. Come as you are. We love Jesus, that's why we meet at 7:15 in the morning. We need it, we need it. Iron sharpens iron as one man sharpens another. Proverbs, thank you, Bobby. Proverbs 27:17 is our, it's on the back of our shirts. Read that, find out what that means. I want to thank you acknowledged one of the most important person. Thank you. Magali was a big part of Brewline at the very beginning. She supported me, she supported the cause with her giving during COVID, we were her labor. It was an honor to serve alongside her. There's another guy, I call him Mr. San Fernando Zev. Mr. San Fernando Zev opened his doors to many places where we started meeting. And also, who knows what the Brewline was in San Fernando? Nobody? Brewline Coffee Shop, Truman and San Fernando Road, the caboose is still there. That's Philip Thordia, who opened his doors when Starbucks asked us to leave. First and foremost, you forgot, I want to thank the most important person, supporter in my life, that's my wife, Stella. Who has given 922, give or take a few Saturdays, to serve the ministry. Actions is what we talk about, live out life with others, the brokenhearted. I am humbled and generally touched by the recognition for the men of the Brewline. Yes, we started with six men, and it's, I could give you statistics, but they're crazy. I take my hat off to all the men that are here. Reed, most of you guys know me for the wisdom we now have. I thank you all for supporting city council for coming, but mainly that we're blessed to wake up this morning and celebrate this day. But God chose the foolish things of the world to confine the wise. God chose the weak things of the world to shame the strong. Corinthians 1:27. You said it, 38 years ago, I'm going to share real quick. I was driving up here, and there was a bus picking up future inmates. And I looked at my wife, I said, I was on that bus 39 years ago. How could this be? Only Jesus, only Jesus. I pray for wisdom, continuous wisdom, joyful obedience. If you know somebody, two-thirds of American families are infected with alcohol and drug use. You know somebody. I know a lot. I ask you to get ahold of Brewline Men's Fellowship, come visit us, send them there. We'll give them love, the love they probably don't know about, that Jesus Christ. One more time, I thank the city council. So, some statistics, 92,000 cups of coffee in 17 years.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez. Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Accept the certi- Accept the certificate of recognition and continue to want to serve the community. Thank you, God bless.
Oh, Mr. Hernandez. All right, the next presentation is a certificate of recognition to VFW Post 3834 for contributions to the community.
Thank you. I am so pleased to honor our local VFW, which stands for Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 3834. Our VFW has been instrumental in making themselves available to our community. They have allowed their property to be used to host food distributions, health fairs, and resource fairs. They also allow the Girl Scouts and Scouting America to hold their meetings in their building for free, as well as allowing community dance classes and a local girls' traveling softball team fundraiser to be held there without any cost. They have co-sponsored job fairs and free banquets for veterans and are involved in addressing issues affecting veterans in both San Fernando and throughout Los Angeles County. Thank you for all you do to the members of the VFW Post 3834.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. On behalf of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 3834, I want to extend a sincere gratitude for your continued support of our veterans and our post. Your recognition of the sacrifices made by our service members means a great deal to us. Not just those who wore the uniform, but the families and the entire community. Thank you for standing with us, remembering our heroes, and for helping keep the spirit of service alive here in our city. We deeply appreciate your leadership and your commitment to those who serve. Thank you.
It is now.
Can I ask the people who don't know George and hate for him, can we take a picture? Can we take a picture together?
Brewline!
Okay. The next presentations we have were agendized by Councilmember Lopez. The presentation is a certificate of recognition to Wingstop General Manager Jose Rivera for his contributions to the community.
Thank you. As someone who deeply valued the city, I'm proud to see how our business community keep showing up for our residents with kindness and commitment. And in this case, Jose... Okay. Jose Rivera is the Wingstop manager. His achievement and personal growth make us, you know, so be proud to recognize this night. So Jose, if you want to come to the paroio?
Jose Rivera?
He's not here? Okay. Okay, well... He's coming? Okay. I didn't know he's coming. Let me see.
Okay. All right. The next presentation we have is a certificate of recognition to Martinez Income Tax and Associates owner Victor Martinez for contributions to the community.
First of all, I just want to say thank you so much, Victor, for always handing your hands strong to our community and especially for all the you that you support and your personal level fundraising for all the kids that having hard time in our community. And not only that, but I know you've been having your business for over almost three day kids here in the city of San Fernando and you're in front of Morningside and I know you love our community and you're always there when we need you. Thank you so much on behalf of our residents and families in San Fernando.
Thank you so much for the recognition. You know, there's a lot of people here that are here to support me and that's the reason why it seems like I do a lot for the community. But if it's not with them, I wouldn't be here at all. You know, we do support a lot of nonprofit organizations. Just yesterday, we did an event with Smiling Hearts WS. And in the near future, we have the Veterans Day Parade. I believe Fred is here as well in the back.
Yeah.
But that's something that I really would like our community to support. It's again November 11th, so please come out and support. And, you know, as far as message to my family, to my kids, it's not as important, and I'm going to paraphrase TD Jakes, it's not as important what you leave them, but what you leave in them that matters. So I hope that my acts, my few acts of good deeds is what's going to carry them through their lifetime. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. The next presentation we have is certificates of proclamation to Seguros Sin Fronteras owner Baltasar Martinez for contributions to the community.
Well, what can I say about Baltasar? You know, he's one of the person here in San Fernando who knows everybody and everybody knows him. And, you know, with a big heart, he always support. And recently, this year, he supported Dia de los Niños here in San Fernando. It was a small event, but when I asked him to, if he can support us, he always there to support the community, you know, whatever the community needs, you know, since he was in Mission College, right? A president from Mission College to our community events, he always be there. And I am really proud to call my friend because he's not only one of the people, you know, in the political arena, but he look into you more into the human level and I really appreciate it for that. Thank you, Baltasar.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and everybody in the community. I just, I'm just humbled to be here and I'm truly blessed to be part of this community. When we started our business a couple of years ago, we had a franchise with Farmers Insurance. One of the first persons that we worked with, Joel, when we started the chamber with some people, Mission College, we worked with the mayor, Mary, to help students with their scholarships. And like Victor said, it's not about, it's collective, it's just about the community. So one of the things that we do local, it really helps us to do global, like for instance, like when we brought the missionaries from Kenya, from Africa, you give them a certificate. And one of those gentlemen, he didn't have a shot at getting a job at the government, he took the certificate and said, "Look, I did missionary work in the city of San Fernando." So he got the job. So that's like from doing something local, you get to something global. So I just want to say that we also brought over a couple hundred students from all over California. Again, the community came along, the odd fellows opened their doors, the chopper on people to bring students from San Luis Obispo all the way to San Diego. They came to the city of San Fernando, stayed here, they went to Men to volunteer. We were able to make that happen. Now, as a small business owner, we started again from zero, so I want to acknowledge my wife for that. She, I asked her, like, I was working in corporate, as you know, the insurance company changed. They say, "We don't, you won't be able to be recruiting in corporate anymore." So I told her, "You know what? We have to take a step of faith. Let's go from zero." And she said, "Go for it." So we're back again, we're back in business, we're back in the community. And just thank God, because God's been good to me. And I want to thank my wife and Mr. Emilio's here and thank you all for it.
Oh my, that's a boy!
It's time for photos. All right. Our next presentation is a certificate of recognition to businesses for fostering business excellence by demonstrating outstanding commitment to maintaining code compliance and supporting community standards. And will the following business owners please step up? Alma Jimenez from Majestic Hair Beauty Salon. And Southern California Pizza Company.
Councilmember staff, audience, this certificate of recognition is made possible thanks to the support and vision of the city council, who championed the creation of the Community Preservation Commercial Property Education and Maintenance Program. Through this initiative, the Community Preservation Division continues to engage with their local businesses to promote property upkeep, ensure compliance with local codes, and enhance the overall appearance of the San Fernando commercial corridors. Ultimately, this program strengthens not only the city's neighborhoods, but also the economic vitality of San Fernando. We sincerely thank the businesses recognized this evening for their continued commitment to making San Fernando a great place to do business. So congratulations.
All right. The next certificate we have is a presentation of certificates of recognition to sponsors for the San Fernando Law Enforcement Post 521 Fundraising Dance. Do we have representatives from American Legion Post 176, Gain Federal Credit Union San Fernando Branch, Latin Dukes Car Club, Midnight Breed Social Club, Saratelle and Solatorios Social Club?
Solitarios.
Solitarios.
Sorry to do that. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, San Fernando, for this prestigious award. How we came about, three clubs got together five years ago and now we are here today, still doing it together. Officer Fernando Miranda approached us and he had this little, wanted to do a fundraiser for the explorers. So me, myself, I was an explorer. I have two other guys in our club that were explorers. So this kind of like fascinated me. Not only that, was Charlie and Adam from the Latin Dukes. So we decided to go ahead and have a dance. We did a dance for them. We had a little nice fundraiser. The chief was there, he threw the chocolate down for the night. But we all like to do this again. And we all, back in the day, were like, "Whew, a handful." But now we're here to get back to the community of what we have taken away back in the day. But we're here and we're looking forward to do a little bit more. And once again, thank you very much. And I want to do one more thing off the cuff. I'm going to give a heads up to Fred Flores and for doing the parade for 22 years. So the Midnight Breed decided to do a donation, first club to ever do a donation for the Veterans Parade. And we have a lot of veterans in our club. And once again, I was nominated as the grand marshal. So thank you, Fred. Thank you for the committee and Charlie, Adam, for all the hard work you did. And not only that, all the guys from the club. We got Latin Dukes, the Solitarios, and my guys from the Midnight Breed. They all moved forward, they all pushed what they could, sold tickets, got it together, and we were able to do this fundraiser for the kids. So thank you once again, Mayor, San Fernando Council. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you so much. It is an honor and a privilege to be here. And none of this would have been possible without my family. And I would like my family to come up here and support me, as they always have. And thank you, city of San Fernando. Fernando, thank you.
Come on, Reed, Solitarios. Come on, come on, guys, Estee, come on up.
Our club house is on, question?
All right. Our final presentation this evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, is a presentation of certificates of recognition to Empower San Fernando Entrepreneurship Academy instructor and participants. And can we have Hector Martinez come up, please? Danar Castaneda, Alicia Garcia, Toei Rodriguez, and Veronica Gonzalez.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight as we recognize the graduates of the Empower San Fernando Entrepreneurship Academy. Over the past several weeks, these participants have dedicated their time and energy to learning, growing, and developing the tools to build and strengthen their businesses right here in San Fernando. This program hosted through the city's Business and Community Resource Center was designed to empower local entrepreneurs with the knowledge and confidence to take their ideas to the next level. Each of you showed up with determination, creativity, and a genuine passion to make a difference in your community, and that's something truly worth celebrating. I also want to take a moment to recognize Hector Martinez, who led this year's academy with so much heart, expertise, and commitment. His guidance and encouragement have made a lasting impact, not just on the participants, but on the future of entrepreneurship in our city. To our graduates, congratulations. We're so proud of what you've accomplished and we can't wait to see how you continue to grow and contribute to San Fernando's small business community. Thank you for being a part of this journey and congratulations once again.
Well, I'd like to thank the city of San Fernando for the opportunity to showcase what we can do in the city. I hope that in the future, we can continue to do this entrepreneurship program. And as I stated before, I really want to shoot for the younger crowd, like middle school and high school kids. So, city council, in the future, we would love to participate or be in partnership with you guys. Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Hi. I'm good. How are you? You look beautiful as always. Madam Mayor and City Council members, that concludes tonight's presentations. Madam Mayor, would you like to open the floor for closing comments from the city council?
Would anyone like to make some closing comments?
Just a reminder that we have refreshments for the two people who are still here.
Yes, we do. Oh, we have portos back there, so if you want to have some refreshments, we have them over here on the lobby area, once we're done and closing the meeting. So you're all welcome to come over. So my, if I have some, I want to thank everyone for coming and making every effort to be here today. It's truly appreciated. Thank you for bringing your families and for sharing this special celebration with us. Each certificate presented tonight is well deserved. Thank you all for what you have done to support the city of San Fernando and our community. Given that, this meeting is adjourned.